Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Approval of the agenda, we have two changes. Seven F will be taken off of tonight's agenda. And eight A, A will be added to the agenda update on our street project up on the north end. Is there any other changes? Counsel? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those two changes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the March 7th, 2018 regular meeting. All receive them in your packet. Is there any corrections? Clarification? Hearing nothing, is, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 7th, 2018 regular meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. This now brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Calling a third time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Seeing no one that wants to, our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings. This will now bring us to our reports and presentations. Sinclair Lewis Foundation slash Friends Library.
Thank you for letting me come speak tonight, I'm Jim Umhafer, president of the Sinclair Lewis Foundation. And we have a couple of members of the Friends of the Library, Barb Carlson and Sue Haney. We are here tonight to ask on an official basis that the name of Bryant Library be changed to the Sinclair Lewis Library. We understand that the library is owned by the city and the reason we're asking this is in 2020 is the 100th anniversary of the publication of Main Street. Sinclair Lewis and his family donated a number of books and magazines to the library. And we found out through our research, through Dave Simpkins, that Bryant was a famous writer from out east. They named the library after him in the hopes that he would come to SOX Center, he did not. He's never stepped foot in SOX Center, there are no Bryant family members in SOX Center or have anything to do with SOX Center. He was grateful for the naming the library after him, maybe he donated some money or some books, I'm not sure about that. But our purpose is to honor Sinclair Lewis because his family was much more instrumental, even when Sinclair Lewis lived overseas and elsewhere in the United States, he would still send books and magazines to the library, he took a personal interest in the library. We feel that in 2020, as in previous anniversaries, there's going to be some national attention drawn to SOX Center, taking their take on Main Street for the centennial of that, and we just thought this would be an appropriate gesture. Part of the request would be mostly cosmetic. We're not asking to change the name on the National Storage Register or anything like that, that's perhaps a little more complicated. We're asking for the sign mostly to be changed in front on that brick pedestal in front of the library. Where it says Bryant Library, to change that to Sinclair Lewis Library. No idea the expense of that, but that's the request as it is right now.
Okay. Counsel, do I have any questions? I personally don't have a problem with it, I think what, we won't be able to take action on that tonight.
Yep.
But we should be able to bring it up on a future agenda and.
Sure, and I'd be glad to come down back if the council's interested, we have some more history, like I said, thanks to Dave Simpkins, who did a lot of research on the history of the Bryant Library.
Sure.
And there has been some effort in previous decades to change the name, but for something that just kind of faded into the past. So this is not the first request for this, but I appreciate your time. Please ask us back if you'd like some more information.
Definitely will, thank you.
Thank you.
Police Department Monthly Report, Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, activity report for February 2018, some of the numbers I had for that month. We had, we gave out 16 administrative tickets, most of them for parking. We had 14 alarm calls. We had 45 business assists. We had 17 assists for other agencies. We had 18 citizen contacts. We issued nine citations for driving on a revoked or suspended license. Gave out eight citations for having a small amount of marijuana or drug paraphernalia. We had five harassment complaints. We had eight juvenile problem calls. Had 17 medicals. We gave out seven citations for no Minnesota driver's license. We had nine accidents. Patrolled at the school 36 times. Special detail patrols, we did 71 of those. We had 28 suspicious calls. We had 12 welfare checks. We had six unwanted person calls. And we gave out 223 verbal warnings for a total activity of 748. We had actual calls of 525. So comparing that to January, we were up by calls by 76. Gave 58 more warnings, and so we're up a total of 134. And compare that to 2017, we're up 133 calls, down on warnings 89. And then up a total of 44. That's pretty much it for February.
Questions?
Brian, I have a question there, you've got, last month there, driving after revocation of license and driving after suspension, nine people? What happens to them?
What happens to them?
I know they get a citation, they have to go to court, but.
They have fine and, yeah.
And then they're back, you ever get any repeat offenders on that? Oh my gosh.
Yes.
You take their car away, then you wouldn't have to worry. Thank you.
Is your new squad member on the job yet, or?
The new full timer, pardon, the, yep, Dean, yep, we started that schedule back in, just in February here. And it's, all the officers seem to like the new rotation and the extra guys, so.
Good.
Of course, we're still getting acclimated to it, so.
Sure.
It's a process that'll take probably a few months, but it seems to be going well right now.
Good, you suppose that could contribute to the spike a little bit, or?
Maybe, yeah.
See, picking up some stuff that may have been missed?
Yep, yep, more activity out there now.
And we're on schedule with the part timer, as far as?
Yep, we're doing a background on him right now, and then be finishing that up, and then we'll get him to do his psych and physical, and hopefully get him going here then.
Okay, good. Any other questions for Brian? Thank you.
Thank you.
Airport Board Report, Vicki?
The airport board met in regular session on March 14th, they welcomed their new member that you appointed, Joe DeVitro. They did receive the update on our 2017 runway project, the engineers were there talking about that. Just a few things to finish up the punch list this spring, and we'll be able to close that project out. We did review the plans for the airport entrance road paving, that's the project that we're expecting to do later this summer. So that will all be, that will be paved, and that, that is shared 95, 90, federal, five state, five city. So that is the participation, MINDOT is still kicking in that extra 5%. And we did discuss the update of the zoning ordinance, we're still waiting for funding from MINDOT. When it gets closer to the end of their fiscal year, which is June 30th, then they look at what available funds they have for projects such as this. So if they do fund it, we will proceed with that project, if they don't fund it, of course, then we will put it on maybe for next year, or when they do have available funding. And then we also are looking at, we have had some failure of the pumps, on the new pumps out at the airport, the gas pumps out there. And so Bolton Mink is looking into it further, they brought their engineer, their mechanical engineer to the meeting to, talked about the types of failures that we're having, and what we've done to date, and right, and we have built a timeline of the times they've had to come out and repair it, and what has caused it. So they're trying to get to the bottom of it with both the installer and the manufacturer of the pump. So hopefully we'll be able to have resolution to that soon. And I think that's it for the airport.
Questions?
Were those pumps, I thought I remembered the discussion that they were going to replace those after the first couple of times that they were failing, or they were failing initially?
11 years, isn't it? 11 years they've been failing?
No, I know. It seems like it.
Yeah.
No, we, they have been replaced. That's what I thought. We're on our fourth pump. Okay. And there's just something about the installation or the way the system is, and the last pump that went back that was replaced has been beyond warranty, and so then the installer was able to keep that pump rather than sending it back to the manufacturer, and they tore it apart, and they found that there's some severe deterioration of the bearings, so now they kind of, okay, now we're shooting, we're ruining the bearings in these, now what is causing that? So they're kind of working their way backward as to what's potentially causing the problem, and, and in the end also getting the warranty to cover that last pump as well. So that's where we're at right now, we'll keep you updated, hopefully we'll be able to find the solution. I mean, these pumps are all over the place, we don't understand why it's having an issue here repeatedly, here. So something's different about our system. So hopefully we'll find out.
Any other questions? Okay. And then move on to our action items. Approve Resolution 2018-13 entering in master agreement with MINDOT.
The city works with MINDOT on like cooperative ventures, this is kind of like street repairs, street maintenance. MINDOT has a plan, a facility right here in town, and so our staff and their staff work together, sometimes we'll help them with projects, they'll help with us. And our master partnership contract with them has expired, so MINDOT has presented with us with their new updated master partnership contract for review and approval. What it really does is just, it sets up parameters of what services or products they can provide. It details who's liable, whose insurance covers what, you know, if, if we use MINDOT equipment, or if MINDOT's employees help us or ours help those, it just defines whose liability that is for, and what reimbursement rates apply. So what, the reason this came up is we're looking at purchasing oil through MINDOT because they are on a big state bid and they get it much less expensive, and it's the oil that is used in the patching, the street pothole patching and the crack filling. So that's what started this, so then it's like, okay, now our master contract expired, we need to get that renewed, and then we just move forward from there. So what we're looking for tonight is Resolution 2018-13 entering into the master partnership contract with Minnesota Department of Transportation.
Questions?
This is a five-year contract, isn't it?
Four, I think, four, yeah.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2018-13 entering into a master partnership contract with Minnesota Department of Transportation?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Point to port, appoint the appointment to the CBB Board.
Should be approved, the appointment.
Yeah.
Okay, the CBB still has one vacant position, is one position for a three-year term. As you know, in our ordinance 777, the mayor can appoint eight with the approval of the council, one a member of the chamber, one from the city, and the remaining six from representative businesses or individuals. The term of Dick Palipnik expired on December, expired December 31st, 2017, and Annette Hinden Camp has applied to fill that position. So the request tonight is to appoint Annette Hinden Camp to the Convention and Visitors Bureau for a three-year term. Should be effective today, March 21st, it would expire December 31st, 2020.
Questions? Concerns? Do I have a motion to appoint Annette Hinden Camp to the Convention and Visitors Bureau?
Sure.
I'll second.
Motion by Keith, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approve Appointment of Campground Attendants for 2018.
Okay, sorry about that. Harold and Pat Reed, who were the campground attendants for the 2013 through 2016 camping seasons, have applied to return to the position for 2018. The park board did meet on this, and they recommend that the Reeds be offered the position. The rate of pay that they received in 2016 was $11,000 plus a campsite, and that's the same amount the board has recommended they be paid for 2018. One change to the duty includes removing care of the Sinclair Lewis Park restrooms on weekdays, and adding testing the splash pad water, and cleaning the splash pad restrooms on weekends and holidays. So our staff will be taking care of the Sinclair Lewis bathrooms on, during the work week, like they do J.C. Park, Conservation Park, all the other parks. And then the Reeds in exchange, then they would add the splash pad to their duties, so it's just kind of a little bit of a swap there. So what we're looking to is the appointment of Harold and Pat Reed as campground attendants for 2018, at a pay rate of 11,000 for the season, with, with the campsite.
Questions? Comments? We had that amount budgeted, right?
Yes, that is what we budgeted.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Harold and Pat Reed as campground attendants for 2018, at a pay rate of $11,000 for the season?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. And that includes the campsite, right?
Plus the campsite.
Yeah, verify that.
11,000 plus a campsite.
Right, okay, so. Any other questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approve Resignation from Arena Attendant.
So Keith Sorenson, who has worked at the arena as an attendant since 1995, pretty much since the beginning, he has submitted his resignation, and he will be retiring from the arena. So he has submitted his retirement effective the end of the season, which we took the ice out last week, so the season is over. So we're just asking to accept the resignation of Keith, I know that he poured his kind of heart into that, that was his baby up there for a long time, and it was really hard for him to make this decision. And so we are requesting that you do accept the resignation.
Do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Keith Sorenson?
Sure.
Motion by Keith.
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. And on behalf of the city, I think we need to extend a thank you to Keith for those years of service. Approve Resolution 2018-14 Accepting Quote for Concrete and Storage Building.
The city has discussed adding concrete to the cold storage building in 2017, but at which time we did receive quotes. And then that request was not approved, but it has been suggested it be reconsidered for 2018. So we did have the quotes refreshed, and so we have, the ones that you have here are the new re-quotes, the new updated quotes. And we have one from A&amp;H Concrete for $24,000, and one from Schmizing for $39.5, with a $2,500 discount if the city does the grading. At last year, we did have an additional quote for hooking up water and sewer to the building for $4,600. We're not asking that to be considered at this time, just in the back corner where that utility would come in, we're just going to form that off, and that will just stay dirt in that area till some future date when the building gets finished. And so what we're looking for tonight is to reconsider the installation of concrete in the cold store billet, building, and I have that as Resolution 2018-14.
Questions? Concerns?
How large is the building, and then does this quote also include the apron that they were discussing last year? This quote does not include the apron because we're going to be doing some yard work out front first. And so we'll either be doing later on a concrete apron out there, or we will be doing paving. So one of those two things. Okay, how many square feet is the cold storage? It's 72 by 84, is the size of the building. And this is for six inch thick with two foot on center rebar, and then three floor drains, or three floor grates. And it's all laser screeded, so that's kind of where we're at with it.
So is there actual specs in, that we had laid out on how we wanted this done?
Yeah, when, last year when we went out to them, we had said that we wanted it to be six inches thick and how, how we wanted to have it, so we were getting apples-to-apples comparisons, or we were hoping to get apples-to-apples comparisons anyway.
One of the things I was wondering is if we got any kind of guarantee. You know, if it settles or whatever in one point, and we end up with three inches of water sitting when it gets warm, you know, in the middle of the floor. You know, I want, I kind of want to see a, if we're going to do this, some kind of guarantee that the variant, the slope variance is going to be within a certain tolerance.
And typically what we do if we accept a quote, then we enter into a contract, and we have a standard contractor contract that has retainage, and it has a warranty in, built into it. And then they are of course licensed and bonded, the providers, and I can, when we do the contract, I can, if that is a concern of yours that there may be areas that would hold water, then we would put that in there, and if that occurs, that that would be their responsibility to repair.
Because one of the things is, you know, a $2,500 discount on the one quote for, if the city does the grading, still does not protect the city from, as far as settling, because somebody's going to have to compact it, whether, regardless of who does the grading, it's got to be compacted and stuff like that. So. My, in my personal opinion, I think it should go to the operations committee to actually draw up the specs and, and make sure that we're on board, and then everybody, then we can just go advertise it, rather than just go out and get two quotes.
I was, so what are the additional kind of specs you'd be looking for? I mean, just so I, I know what we can put on there?
Well, something that we can see in black and white that is going to be, you know, is a rebar, which you had stated, but none of that has ever come across, you know, is a rebar? Are they going to pour it in four slabs, or are they going to pour it in one big slab all at once? Are they going to guarantee there's no settling, that the water always run out the doors, or to the grates? You know, that's, that kind of stuff I'd kind of like to see before we just approve to spend money on a cold storage building. We are talking taxpayer dollars here, and we've got a lot of other things.
And I know that, that they do use laser screening, so that the laser is set up to make sure that you get a nice, nice surface. But, you know, if you have concerns over what was requested for quotes, you know, we certainly can have that looked at again. Was it only, was, was it just given to these two companies? No, we had requested from others, but not everybody responded. And as well as this year? Or was, was, did Matt just go back to these two companies? I think this, this year we just refreshed the ones that had responded last year. Okay. So we didn't re-advertise to everybody or send out, well, actually a lot of times what we do if we need that, we send out a complimentary request of all the contractors in the area, and those that respond. And then, and then, but this year we just refreshed the ones that we, that responded last year. And we had a slight increase, not a whole lot, but an increase.
So basically, when we went out to these, they were handed a, a bid and spec form?
We had a, we had requested, what we'd requested, we gave them the size of the building, how, how thick that we wanted the concrete, and that, and then how many floor drains that we wanted to have in there. And that was what.
And that's the only thing we had in there, okay. I was just thinking, you know, I know, we could get into detail with the engineering layout on how to do that, I don't need to spend the money on that, but I think we need a little more in there than just, this is how thick we want it, and how many floor grates.
Yeah, the only concern I have is, is I don't remember, I know we did this six months ago, and I know we went through it, but at this point, I don't remember what those decisions were. You know, it's.
I mean, it maybe wouldn't hurt to me.
That's, I'm thinking it's been at least, must have been at least six months now.
It was June, it was, it was March of 17, we did it.
So it's been a year even.
Yep.
So, I mean, it seems reasonable to take a quick look and make sure that it's still what we want, and that we didn't miss anything. So.
To general sense, just to.
Reasonable to take a quick look at it.
And have them look at it, and include some specs that, you know.
Make sure that the specs are what we, we haven't changed our mind on anything or missed something.
And certain guarantees, you know, all of a sudden you pour a slab all at one, that building that's high, and they pour it all at once, and it settles in three places, okay, what kind of guarantee, you're going to come in and jackhammer it all out and put it back into your expense?
So do you want our, do we, you want, the council wants to kind of work on the design on how to accomplish? Is that what you're thinking?
I just, if we're going to spend the city money, I want a guarantee. That, who, if, is, you know, anybody can pour concrete.
Yeah.
And I know they're in the business of doing it, but it's, it's what kind of guarantee we're going to get if all of a sudden it settles in four places, or the water's not running to the floor drains? Are you going to come back and fix it without no more expense to us?
Okay, I can get you a copy of our standard contract, which I think will probably answer a lot of those questions that you have.
Could be.
Too, so, so you're sending it to operations?
General consensus?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll then move on to seven G. Approve Resolution 2018-15 Approving Plans for Getty Street.
Okay, we have the, you have the plans that you did receive in your, with your packet for the Getty Street project, and this is going to be the resolution approving the plans and authorizing the bid. And so Chuck is here to kind of give you a little brief presentation on the project, because it's been a while since it's been in front of you, and then we'll move forward with that.
Good evening, Counsel, Mr. Mayor. I'm here to present on Getty Street Reconstruct for final plan approval. Just to recap on the project location, it is south of 12th Street in the corner, along Info Center, right off the Main Street, I-94. I'm just going to jump into some of the details, we're planning for a 36 standard, 36-foot face-to-face urban section. We have a B618 curb and gutter planned, and we have planned for a nine-ton road design. It's similar to our, what we have for their Fifth Street construction up on the 2018 CIP project. It's a four and a half inches of tumulus pavement section and 10 inches of class five. We currently do not have any sidewalk plan to be installed along this stretch. We think it might be a better option, if the city would like sidewalk, to do that when the property develops and require the developer to include that, because we're not sure what it's going to develop into now, so just wanted to point that out. Just to review the alignment of Getty Street, we are shifting it approximately 40 feet to the, to the west to line up with the center line of Getty Street on the north side of 12th Street. So you can kind of see how it lines up with the center lines there. Just to review the, the new water and sewer stubs for Info Center property, we are upsizing those to six inch for both sanitary sewer and water main, water service, and we are connecting to the existing services on the west side. We, and we are currently not planning to reconnect the Info Center, there's been some discussion with city staff. It's currently not in use, and we don't see any reason to reconnect to that right now, so that is the plan. This kind of gives you a layout of the new Getty Street and Highway 71 intersection. We've been working with MINDOT on this. We came up with the, what you can see for the, includes a median. The point of this median, it's going to be a right-in and right-out only. There'll be some striping changes being done on Highway 71, we're moving the northbound left turn on Highway 71, so there won't be any left, left turn in, and it will, will not accept any traffic coming off the, off ramp off I-94 for through traffic. For bid date, we're planning on April 19th. This does, it's two weeks after the opening of the 2018 CIP project, we wanted to overlap. We wanted to overlap them by a week just to allow contractors to, to see this one out there while they still can adjust any numbers if needed. Uh, there may be some benefits for some cost savings for that. And just to review the, our current construction, construction estimate, uh, we're at two hundred and ninety-five thousand for this project. It is a slightly more than the feasibility was, uh, and also that was due to the, the, our median changes for that Highway seventy-one and Getty Street intersection. So with that, I'll ask if there's any questions?
Questions?
Was that median, um, more a suggestion from MinDOT or would, I don't remember seeing that ever an option before?
Sure, it was mostly from MinDOT. We, uh, they wanted to limit that traffic. Uh, we've probably sent three or four different designs back and forth between them before we could come to one that they approved. And we did run it through our, our auto turn, AutoCAD program. We have to, have to kind of make sure eighteen-wheelers can, can turn there too. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
So basically, are we going to need to get an easement from MinDOT to put that in or how's that work? Or is that right on the edge of our right-of-way?
I did not discuss that with them exactly on that. I could talk to them and, uh, get back to you.
Because I don't want to be tearing up their road putting in a median at our expense if they're not going to give us an easement to do it.
I, uh, the people from MinDOT I did work with would, I think they're the ones that would approve that easement, so since they have approved the median, I would anticipate that they would give us any easement to do that. Uh, we would have to do a permit, uh, the contractor would, um, whoever built it, but, uh.
And I know the right-in and right-out was one of the things that MinDOT had mentioned when it was going to be developed a couple other times that, uh, and didn't go through, but that's what their idea that road was, so I shouldn't, I don't see any problems. I was just wondering if that had been discussed or not. The other thing, we're moving that whole road over, what, thirty-three feet or forty feet? The existing road that's there is going to be tore out?
Correct.
What are the plans? Are we just going to leave that dirt until it gets sold and somewhat develops or what are we doing? Because, you know.
Could be ugly.
Well, it could be a major mud hole or, or are we going to end up having to seed it or do something and increase the cost even more?
Uh, we currently, well, so we'll take out the existing aggregate base, um, and use that on the project or salvage as much as possible. We do plan on reseeding that whole boulevard area on the, on the east side. It'll, we'll get, it'll get shade to drain into the ditch and then we'll seed it.
Okay.
Topsoil and seed.
You don't foresee needing to add black dirt to that area?
I think we will, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah.
That's one of the concerns, you know, you tear out a road and just leave it and hope somebody buys it because you know eventually it's all going to get tore out again.
Yeah.
You know, so are we wasting our money on doing it or how do you want it?
That, but like you said, it could be a head of a mud hole too for.
Right.
Which doesn't lend itself to selling.
Plus, if we do a curb cut to get into that area where people are using it for kind of like a parking ride right now, you know, with the info, the information center parking lot, if that's gravel, that's fine, but is there going to be a definition so they don't get off and out into it?
We do, uh, I, I was, missed that on my presentation, but we do plan on paving up from the new driveway to the existing parking lot in the Info Center, so we, we plan on remain, uh, keeping access open.
Okay.
For, for those folks. We'll just, you know, you know, disconnect the pavement and our new apron. We're not extending the curb currently, but, um, that is in the plan.
I'm, I'm just concerned about spending a lot of money on something that we're going, then whoever buys it's going to end up tearing it all out anyway.
Right, you're planning on paving it, could we not just leave gravel through the roadway?
Could be class five.
We could do just class five, yes.
I imagine we're just going to end up tearing it out at some point.
Well, if not us, whoever buys it will.
Just need it removed, so.
You know, I'm looking at trying to save as much money as we possibly can on this without.
So the area that the road is getting tore out, um, that's still going to be city right-of-way unless we decide, you know, because we have the property for sale. This is going to be kind of like a really wide excess right-of-way. And so in the future, if we decide to sell that to the buyer, if there's a buyer or if it remains city boulevard for stormwater or something, that's yet undetermined depending on the buyer.
Okay.
But right now, if somebody bought the property, this excess boulevard where the old road came out is not part of that.
Not part of the property?
It, it could be, it could be, but it really is just excess right-of-way at this point. Because we just have a really wide right-of-way there.
Okay, well, thank you for that explanation because I was thinking it was just going to add to the size of the property that we have for sale.
It, it could, it, you know, that's something that can be negotiated, so.
Right.
I'm, I'm kind of thinking that whoever buys it might very well say, you know, I don't really need to have a fifty-foot boulevard. Can you let me have parking or something?
And it could be parking or it could be stormwater management, you know.
I mean, that's what they're doing with it, but.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Okay, so you were, and then back to what he was saying, so we're thinking not pave the driveway, we'll just classify it?
Yeah.
Okay, because we, just to make sure we knew that.
Because basically, there isn't enough room in that parking lot for somebody to go in and park and turn around anyway, so it's basically cars and pickups that would be in there for us.
Maintenance people for cutting grass or whatever, yeah.
Right, so basically, I would think class five would work much better.
Yeah.
No need to spend that extra, probably not that much, but it's still money.
But, yeah.
So.
Were there any more questions there?
Any more questions or concerns? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the resolution two thousand eighteen dash fifteen approving the plans and specs and authorizing the advertisement for bid?
I will make that motion with the stipulation that the plans call for paving and we'll go back to class five in that connection.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, Heidi, does everybody understand the motion?
Is there a contingency upon easement being approved or do we need to put that in?
I, I think we'll assume that that's going through.
That's, that's part of the permit, that's part of the permit from MinDOT.
The easement part will be part of the.
Yep.
Good, good.
So, okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Call the question, all those in favor, sign if I was A and I.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven H, approve resolutions two thousand eighteen dash sixteen and two thousand eighteen dash seventeen designating authorized representatives.
Uh, the city of Sack Center through the public utility is a member of Missouri River Energy Services and Western Minnesota Municipal Power Agency. And as a member, the city is entitled to representation of these boards. And in, in the past, we had Paul Heschen as the primary representative and Ted Spanier as the alternate. Uh, because the president of the PUC is now David Thomas, we're requesting to amend the two resolutions to have Paul Heschen as the primary and David Thomas as the alternate. And so this is resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixteen and two thousand eighteen dash seventeen designated Paul Heschen and David Thomas as authorized representatives for the city of Sack Center membership of the Missouri River Municipal Power Agency and the Western Minnesota Municipal Power Agency.
Questions, concerns?
I will comment, only that although there's no obligation for me to abstain, I will.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, for approve resolutions two thousand eighteen dash sixteen and two thousand dash seventeen designating Paul Heschen and Dave Thomas to be the representatives of the city of Sack Center?
Motion.
Motion by Heidi.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor, sign if I was A and I.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries, four in favor, one abstention. Unfinished business, update on the street project.
Councilman, Mr. Mayor, um, our current plan for the twenty-eighteen capital improvements project, uh, we have a bid opening scheduled for April fifth, just to give you an idea on that. Couple weeks away and, uh, two weeks from tomorrow. Um, we've had a call from Jeremy Sunderman on the project. He, uh, we'll just want to show you guys, might work better to walk you through this. He has an exposed aggregate sidewalk in front of his house along Fifth Street.
Yeah, go back to that.
When I'm not fishing, I like to think about fishing. Um, let's see here. Just bear with me for a sec.
Oh, he's flying through this presentation.
Be on Fifth Street North.
Yeah.
Let me get to the street sheet. On Street four, maybe. There we go.
Go over to forty percent up at the top, click down on that, there you go. I'm sorry about that.
So, there we go. Uh, Jeremy Sunderman, he lives along Fifth Street and Oak Street intersection. The stretch, uh, he has exposed aggregate is the stretch, uh, along Fifth Street from Oak Street up to, up to the alley. And he wanted to either replace that with exposed aggregate versus the regular sidewalk we have, um, planned. But looking at the plans, I, there is an opportunity to save it, leave it in place. We tie in nearly exactly with our street grade and our, where we match into the existing boulevard. So we, we could just leave it if the council were to, uh, want that, um, so I just wanted to review that.
Well, his, his services all come in off of, uh, from the west, right?
For water and sewer, yes, I believe, so we can get to that through. Just utility sheets. That was the one. There we go.
Right there.
Yeah, so right, let's see right there.
So his water and sewer comes in from there, so it actually isn't going to disrupt that sidewalk?
Not at all, no doubt. The only thing, um, he does have four trees. They're not shown on the street sheet or this, this sheet because they're on the removal sheets, but, uh, he did, that was kind of another, maybe another, uh, topic we could discuss for tree removals on the project, but he would, I think he said he wanted to save all four trees if possible. That was his request, so, um, those are, you know, the, the trees on this project, they, they were all marked, the ones marked up are all the ones that conflict with any construction on the project, whether it be boulevard grading, curb installation, utility installation. So that, that's kind of how that was, um, if we want to get back to the sidewalk, we can.
Well, the, yeah, if we could save the sidewalk, it would be, you know, I don't have a problem with it as long as it's, you know, it's going to match in with the grade of the street. Otherwise, if we, you know, if it's something that we got to remove or whatever, I would think if it's going to be fancy or exposed, it's going to have to be added onto the assessment.
Yeah, I mean, if we have to take it out, we would put back just.
We'd put normal and if he wants it back to exposed, it would be at his expense. This is what my opinion is, I don't know what anyone else's is, but.
I agree.
Yeah, that's what I'd say, I mean, if we can, if we can save it, that's fine, but.
Okay. Okay.
As far as the tree removal and that, that's the water main that runs close to that curb?
So, yes, and that, that is, uh, those trees do conflict with the water main, utility installation. I know there is some push, push from residents to save as many trees as possible. We, we will be working with them to, to try to do that. Uh, we're not going to come in and, you know, clear-cut the project first. We will remove trees on a, right before the utility is installed and the contractor will review. We will review with the contractor the trees that conflict and that they feel that aren't safe for construction. At that time, we will, so we could work with the residents at that time on those trees. So for these four, you know, we could work with, with Jeremy and review those at the time of the water main installation and everything.
Because depending on the depth of the water main, it depend on whether or not we could work, you know, if we're going to be cutting half the tree's roots off on one side, it's going to kill the tree eventually anyway.
Or it's just going to go down in a windstorm.
Yeah.
Or it'll tip over and, you know, try to leave it and then you're down in the trench working on a water main. It's a hazard to the workers to be having a tree that could fall in on top of them.
Right.
So I'm in favor of saving trees, but not to the expense of.
Yeah, that's why I say again, we try to save trees, if we can, we will.
There are a couple smaller trees there. I was just wondering if he'd be, and I don't know who would pay for it, but is there a chance you can come in and remove them and transplant them to another spot until the project's done and put them back in?
Is there, uh, transplanting your question was?
Yeah, because those are like four-inch silver maples.
You're talking to Jeremy's?
Yeah, the two of them, I think, are smaller trees.
This one, I'm not sure what the species are.
Right.
But these may be the two you're referring to.
Yep. The bigger one, that one there looks like it's not got much life left to it anyway because it's the weirdest looking thing I've ever seen. You know, it's, it's not the most prettiest tree in the world. It is providing shade and I can see you want to keep it, but the other two, if they could be moved and brought back, not that we like that species next to a sidewalk, because if they're searching for water, the roots buckle everything.
They buckle everything, yeah.
You know, let's go and plant a couple of nice cottonwood trees up there. I'm always kidding, making a popular person.
Lee, I'm just throwing all suggestions for anybody else or he's looking for direction.
Yeah, I kind of wanted to get the tree issue kind of out there for the public. And if they want to review any trees they have on their property, you know, I can review those individually with them every, and I would like to do them on an individual basis because each tree has a certain conflict, its own conflict.
Yep.
And some trees have more chance of saving, some have none. So I would like to review those individually with the residents.
Okay, so basically, if anyone's got a concern, you, you wouldn't mind meeting with them?
Absolutely.
Okay, and that, I think that's working with the public very well. That's always can do us, so. Okay, the other question, how are signing easements going along that one alley?
The alley easements?
Yeah.
We haven't worked on that any.
Okay, that's still a work in progress, all right. Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll then go on to new business, two thousand eighteen CIP projects.
These are just some of the, some of the projects that the different boards are talking about or staff and so that we're requesting to go to operations committee and that would be the two thousand eighteen Millen overlay project, yet to be determined. Um, the pavement at the campground that's been requested and I believe the TC forty-five tractor is something that's on the capital improvement plan when we went through the budget process. Um, now I'll add the concrete to the cold storage building in there and I believe the other item that's outstanding was the ambulance. So it'd be kind of those, minimum those five items that'll be on the operations committee agenda.
Questions, concerns? Okay, we'll then move on to the consent agenda. Schedule of claims, unpaid claims of eighty-four thousand eight hundred and two dollars and four cents for a total of the same amount, February checks of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. We have resolution number two thousand eighteen dash eighteen accepting contributions of a hundred dollars from Mary Peterson to be allocated to the ambulance department, six hundred and forty-seven dollars from Coburn's Incorporated. hundred and forty-seven dollars from Coburn's Incorporated to be allocated to the ambulance department, eight dollars from the Coburn's employees to be allocated to the ambulance department, and five dollars from Dennis and Shirley Shermer's to be dedicated to the ambulance department. And on behalf of the city, I wanna thank those four groups or individuals for their contribution. We have resolution two thousand eighteen dash nineteen, approving an off-site gambling permit for community connections of Sock Center. Permit would allow for a raffle to be held on June twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, at the Stearns County Fairgrounds. Do we have any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by say and aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Informational items.
Um, the only thing I have on the informational items, it is not an action item, but it's just according to the Public Works Union contract, Andrew Rustling will advance to step seven, effective with his anniversary date, which is today, March twenty-first, so, that's all I have.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by say and aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against, meeting adjourned.